Okay, I have two o'clock. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, June 14, 2018. It's right at 2:00 P.M. We're in the Alene Australian Community Room of the Dole Student Center located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas to consider an act on the agenda that's been posted. First item on the agenda is call to order, which I will do at this time. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have a quorum. We have six out of eight members present. So, the next item on the agenda is the invocation, and I'm going to ask the invocation at this time, so will you bow your heads, please? Lord God, we are so thankful for the many blessings in our lives that provide such wonderful, wonderful opportunities. We're blessed to have this wonderful place of learning, which is Weatherford College. We're blessed for the fine people that work to make Weatherford College such a tremendous resource, the educators, the administrative staff, its support staff. We're blessed by our students who attend Weatherford College. Thank you, Lord, for this board and its members, those who serve Weatherford College. Guide this board in its deliberations. Help us make wise and effective choices and decisions. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll stand, and we'll let Mr. Baker lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you will, sir.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is open forum for individuals not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number three, our president's report. Dr. Farmer, if you will do that. First item is our enrollment update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few short enrollment updates, recognitions, and employment notifications. I'm very pleased to share a positive enrollment update. Summer one enrollment is up 2%, while our contact hours are down 13% due to the summer schedule shifting of the Occupational Therapy Assistant and Lobotomy Program courses within the summer terms. Summer two enrollment is up 15%. Contact hours are up 22%. And finally, I am pleased to report that despite having record enrollment growth last fall, our preliminary fall 2018 enrollment is up 5% and contact hours are up 6%. We have 86 days of fall registration remaining before the fall 2018 census date and are currently on track for strong enrollment growth in the fall 2018 semester. Recognitions. The Weatherford College rodeo team sent three students to the College National Finals Rodeo in Casper, Wyoming. They are doing very well and are very likely to make the finals. Rodeo students Lane Cooper, Kirby Blankenship, and Kelly Valdez are currently competing in Casper, and we wish them well. This is the 14th consecutive year that the Weatherford College rodeo team has sent representatives to the College National Finals Rodeo. Congratulations to Coach Emmons and team. I'd like to recognize Board of Trustee Vice Chair Sue Cody, Secretary Leela Morris, member Dr. Robert Marlett, and member Judy McAnally for their participation in the 2018 Community College Association of Texas Trustees Conference on June 1st and 2nd. Weatherford College had a very strong showing with four board members present at the trustee conference. Tanner Driscoll, one of baseball coach Jeff Lightfoot's Coyotes, was recently selected in the Major League Baseball Draft. The Washington Nationals selected Tanner in the ninth round. Congratulations to both Tanner Driscoll and Coach Jeff Lightfoot. Weatherford College Ag Club students recently participated in the Texas Junior College Agricultural Association Convention at West Texas A&amp;M University. Our WC Ag Club students collectively won 26 awards at the event. The Weatherford College Humanities Department recently held a creative writing contest. In the short fiction category, first place went to Clint King. In the poetry category, the first place went to Cody Lawson. And in the creative nonfiction category, first place went to Clint King. Congratulations to Weatherford College students Melissa Crowe and Isla Conrad for being named recipients of the $1,500 Erin Rubin Scholarships from the Fort Worth chapter of the Texas Association of Addiction Professionals. Congratulations to Vice President Brent Baker, Evelyn Payne, and the Institutional Advancement Team for another incredibly successful Taste of Parker County event. Thanks to the efforts of the Weatherford College team and the support of our fantastic Parker County vendors and patrons, thousands of dollars were raised to support Weatherford College and our students through the Weatherford College Foundation. Governor Greg Abbott has appointed Weatherford College alumna Melissa Schott to the Texas Board of Nursing for a term set to expire on January 31, 2019. Congratulations to Melissa. And finally, a permanently endowed Weatherford Scholarship Fund is being established in honor of Richard Andy Lawler Jr., the Weatherford firefighter who died June 10 while fighting a wildfire in West Texas. The estate of Mary M. Zalinski is establishing the fund with a $10,000 gift to the Weatherford College Foundation. Weatherford College employee Debbie Alexander, Zalinski's daughter and executor of the estate, stated, "We hope this scholarship will benefit many future firefighters over the years and will keep Mr. Lawler's memory alive." Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Instructor Santiago Gonzalez from our Truck Driving Program resigned effective date 5/18/2018. Instructor Richard Chambers from the Public Safety EMS Program resigned with an effective date of 5/29/18. And instructor Bonnie Baker from the Associate Degree in Nursing resigned with an effective date of 7/9/2018. And finally, instructor Sunny Holmes from Social Sciences resigned with an effective date of 8/16/2018. We thank these instructors for their service and wish them well in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Josh Kwan. We'll move to agenda item number four. Point of order from my standpoint, I know that the approval of minutes from April, May of 2018 would be consent items. What about the other B, C, D, E, F, G, and H? Are we going to want to go through those individually, or are we going to handle those through the consent agenda?
That's the prerogative of the board. If you would prefer to pull any of those items from the consent agenda item list, we can certainly pull those and look at them individually.
Anybody want to do that? I hear no response. Okay, so what I would entertain is a motion to approve the consent agenda items, approval of minutes, May, April, and May 2018, and all the financial reports that are listed, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Is there such a motion?
I second.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Moving to number five, consideration, possible action, TASB Policy Service Update, number 34.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just have one question for Andrew.
Okay.
Under quarterly investment report, whenever we budget for this upcoming year, are we going to budget for increased interest rates on our investments?
Yes, absolutely.
Or are we going to take what we've got now, and whatever we get above that will just be?
We're going to increase it some, if I want, and be looking at some other opportunities for us, so.
Yeah, I think interest, I mean, we're going to see a much higher return on interest rates.
Oh, yeah, they're going up.
And which is good, because we've been down at the low end long enough.
Yeah.
So, I just wondered if... So, how much do we budget in? Do we?
Well, in the past, with the bank accounts, we had a very high rate that was paying on our bank accounts, so we were not working with the CDs as much, because on our depository pledge, we received a better rate for our bank accounts than we did. But since the rates are rising now, we're just going to start moving in, and we're also going to start looking at some other groups out there that can give us a higher rate.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Chairman? Sorry? Anything else?
No, I just...
All right. Moving to agenda item number five, consideration, possible action, TASB Policy Service Update, number 34. Ms. Stone.
The College Partners has TASB Policy Service to update both our legal and local policies. The legal policies reflect mandates from the state or federal law, and board action is not required for updates to legal policies. Tasb also recommends updates to our local policies to ensure these are consistent with recent legislative and legal changes, and board action is required on the local policy updates. And today, we bring you update 34. We just have one new policy in this update, which is BFA Local, and discusses the president's authority to delegate responsibility but still remain accountable to the board. The other updates are just relatively minor, and they include revisions to titles and subtitles. So today, we bring you update 34.
Okay, thank you. Are any questions or comments? I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to approve update number 34?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Thank you, ma'am. Item number 30, item number six, 36. Consolidation, possible act, I'm sorry, consideration, possible action, Enterprise Resource Planning System, number RFP-0418. Ms. Cantrell.
I want to give a little introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to Greg with a little presentation. He was the chair of the committee, the Data Ownership Committee is what we called it. I remember last year, in our budget workshop in early spring, we discussed our ERP system and the need for a new one, and you all told us to get busy. And I think they've been very busy over this last year, working on this ERP system and the proposal that has been brought forth to you all. Basically, we had four companies that responded to the RFP. They were Alucion, High Street IT Solutions, Genzabar Inc., and Oracle Corporation. Alucion and Genzabar met the minimum specification. The selection committee, the selection process included a review of all of these submitted proposals, and there were several groups that were represented on that committee. Greg will go into that a little bit more, and that reviewed these and evaluated the proposals. And we're here today to discuss what went into the process, and our recommendation will be presented later.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell.
Thank you, Andrew. We do have a presentation to give, and to go over this, and Larry was explaining to me that we have a little problem with our remote, so Larry's going to be my remote controller over there.
Thank you, Larry.
Before we get to our recommendation, what I'd like to do is give you a very brief recap of what the ERP system is and why we're doing this, and give you a little idea of how we have gotten to where we've gotten today, some of the criteria that played into our decision-making process, and then finally, we'll go over what we recommend that you approve. And then, I'll turn it back over to Andrew at that time, who will go over the financial model of what we're suggesting, and then the next steps that we have after that. So, basically, the ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning System, and basically, it's all the software systems that control everything that the college does and ties them all together. Everything from the student services, you know, functions of registration and everything that goes along with that, all the way to all the business processes, the human resources practices that get us paid, and that run the whole college. The visual here basically, you know, puts all those processes around the outside of the circle, and the idea is that you see that they're all integrated together. So, today, we have a system that, the best we can come up with, it was first installed over 20 years ago. We don't know exactly how many, but it's been quite a while since we've had it here. It's served the college very well over the years, but its technology has become outdated, and it's causing us to not be able to take advantage of some of the technological innovations that we want to do to help grow the college. So that's why we want to move to the new ERP. The advantages of having all these systems integrated together is that you can have a lot of holistic functions that go along with that, such as workflow, which increases all of our efficiencies, lets us to do, you know, much more value-added jobs for the college. It helps with our data analytics. We'll be able to have much better data for decision-making processes across the board. And then, of course, all this combined together certainly has got to help student success rates here at the college. If there's any questions, Larry, can you go to the next slide? How we've gotten to today is, as Andrew mentioned, that we started this process quite a while ago, back in September of 2016. We put the committee together to start looking into this. So, we had gone on a very methodical approach to this and have taken our time and hopefully done it the right way. We released an RFP in October of 2017, and as part of that RFP request for proposal process, we had the companies that Andrew mentioned come to visit us for some introductory visits in November of that year, and then their proposals were due in January of 2018. Then we had down select, and two companies came in in February, March timeframe, and gave us detailed demonstrations of their product, answered our questions, et cetera. And then that brings us to today, where we're making a recommendation of what we would like to do based on that. Thank you, Larry. Go to the next one. And just, I wanted to give you an idea of who was on the committee. I believe we had a good representation from all areas of the college. These are the folks, the areas that they're in, and the people, some of them that were in the room today that participated in this. They dedicated quite a bit of their time and energy throughout this whole process, so thank you to them. There were a couple of areas that we played into the company that we selected. The first was, from the request for proposal, we put a selection criteria weighting in there to be able to determine what represented the best value for Weatherford College. We said the capabilities and functionality that the system brings to us was a weighting of 40%, cost was 25, the support that they give the product, and the sustainability of it were 20, and then the implementation methodology and the risk that we have to take on for the implementation was a 15%. So that was the criteria weightings that we used when we went through evaluating these proposals. Another factor that we took into account was, this mattered on how the companies engineered and priced their solution for us. Option one was the traditional method where we buy the computers and have them housed here on our campus, and we take care of them, all the security associated with that and the upkeep in the engineering. That's kind of the traditional method. Option two was if we put the, use the system in the cloud, so that would be our equipment but in the vendor's data center in the cloud, and they would maintain, do a lot of the support for us in this model, but a lot of it would still fall to the college to do. Option number three was what they call a software as a service. That's in the cloud, but the company, the vendor that we choose provides almost all the services to us. So, we, there's a lot of advantages of this, and hopefully, you can see on this particular chart that the pros start going much further until we get to the preferred solution as software as a service. This, we feel, is the right way to go for many reasons, for security, for sustainability for the college for the years to come, and for the experience for our students and our faculty and staff. So that being said, that brings us to our recommendation to give what we would like to do. Larry, go to the next one. We recommend that we choose Alucion. Its colleague product is our ERP for the future, and the software as a service model. It was the highest award ranking that the committee, after review, gave it, and we believe that it represents the best value for Weatherford College. When Andrew starts presenting the financial models, some more of those reasons will come out. Alucion has been doing this a long time, since 1968. They have, you know, more than 650 institutions worldwide, 45 higher education institutions in Texas, and 28 of the Texas community colleges use the Alucion colleague product. The benefits that this will give to Weatherford College are many. Summarize three of them. We can achieve greater efficiencies with what we've got today. We do a lot of things that we've done over the years, that we've kind of fallen into habits, and a lot of it is determined by the system that we use. With the new system, we can use automated workflow to do most of all of our processes. And this is across the board from just about everything we do, we can achieve much greater efficiencies. And the faculty and staff can focus on the student, which is what we really need to be doing. And speaking of the student and the employees, just the experience of using the system is going to be incredibly better than it is today, from the student when they come in to our institution to register, to find out information about us, and as they go through the whole process, from asking questions to when they're, when they are finished at Weatherford College, they'll have a much better experience. And then, this is a sustainable technology as well. We won't be needing to do a complete overhaul in 10 years of this. This will allow us, this will bring us into the future and allow us to, the system can scale with the growth of Weatherford College experiences in the years. We won't have to worry about that, finding the staff to support it, dealing with the security issues, et cetera. So that's why we feel that this is the right decision for Weatherford College, and that's what we're asking you today. With that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to Andrew to go over the financial model and then tell you about if we receive approval, what our next steps are. Thank you.
In discussing the process that we went into, RFPs, I know that you all are familiar with the request for proposals and the fact that you take these in, you evaluate them. And basically, possible score, Alucion scored 89 out of 100 was the top, and then the next one was 69 to that. So when we looked at this, the cost over the two, Alucion was the most closely modeled, but we, looking at it and evaluating it, I asked for all the committee members to go back, and please tell me on those rankings, what made each area greater than the others? Some of the, there was some software, some, the continuing area was left out of one, some others that we felt like was, we would have to go to another source to get that would make a difference there. We also went back to Alucion, and they dropped their cost some. The process of an RFP, once you leave that top person and you go to the next vendor to start working with them, you can't go back to the top vendor. So that's, that's one of the whole things, that when they came back to us and gave us the price of this, total implementation over a two-year period is $2 million to $10,000, which is quite costly. But for the, we feel like, long-term, there will be a lot of labor saved with this system. They'll very strongly about it, all of the departments that were represented that you saw earlier, as well as the things it can do, and the instructional areas will benefit the college. They're very, student success tied to student success, and I know with the guided pathways model that we've worked with so much, you go back and you look at your webpages and your, they just flow beautifully with the counseling and advising with the students, and that was one of the big selling points, I think, is how easily you could move through those webpages. And it just is a great system out there, and talking with the other references that we were given were outstanding. Looking at this, we, I believe in the beginning, when we first started talking, we just, Greg got the best figure he could get to come last year when we talked about the budget, and it was like a million five, and we realized this is quite a bit more, but it is a different option going to the cloud. It will save us long-term labor costs that we don't have, wouldn't have, that we wouldn't have otherwise, so we think that it will be beneficial to us. What I would recommend, we have in this year's budget $550,000, which, all of this is timing, because you're buying these services, implementation services, and we don't know exactly how quickly we will get started into this. We're hoping this summer that we can get started. I don't know, Greg might tell you more which, which area he proposes first, but we would have $550,000 out late, hopefully by the end of the summer. If not, I will tell you that that, those funds would roll into reserves at the end of the year, and if we're not finished, I will ask for that money to be transferred out of reserves at the beginning of next year, if there's something happens with the timing of all this. But looking at this, the next year with the implementation cost, we would have $1,120,000. And right now, in the budget, there, when we did this proposed budget, we've only got $550,000 there right now. But what we would propose are two things, and we'll be looking at tax rates in July or in August with you all. It either would come from reserves, the difference in that $550 and the $1,120, or either if you all would consider tax, tax money going into that. And then the last year, 2019, '20, we would have that $550 that's in there as a base, and moving to 840, we're hoping and believe that with our growth that we've had over the last year and going into the count year, or being in the count year right now, our appropriations will look positive for us next year. So that's how we would pay for this. At this point in time, do you have questions that you would like answered?
I don't have any questions. I just think it's very, very important, and I think we have to trust Greg, because he knows what we need, and we have to trust you to come up with the money.
I'll say Greg has brought us light years down the road, as well as Dr. Farmer is bringing lots of new ideas to us that have to do with technology, so there's, there's a base that we have to have there to be able to operate.
I know. It's so important to me. I'm totally for it.
Concerning the reserves you're talking about, what does that part of the fund look like?
It's...
Part of the fund, I believe those dollars will be, I don't have those reserved. I will go over those with you when we do the budget workshop. But right now, I believe I can say safely that any reserves that we would spend next year will have been put in there this year, and we'll touch those previous ones.
And as far as tax money that you're talking about, is it going to be the same amount, or would we be looking at a different amount?
Well, we're already looking at increased dollars on those taxes right now, over the adjusted tax base over last year, that what was budgeted, so some of that is taken care of there. And then depending on, when we go in there, looking at the effective and what our current tax rate is, and working with that, working with you all on that.
Is there an appraisal schedule of any kind?
The certification will be no later than the 25th appraisal, are you talking about tax?
No, just judging whether this thing's working from time to time. I mean, is everybody happy with it in six months, or are they happy with it in a year?
Oh, absolutely.
An appraisal schedule?
We'll have a, Larry, can you put up the next slide, please, for the next one that we have to do?
Those are the next steps.
This is hateful.
To answer your question, Dr. Marlet, we will, you know, after we come to a contract signing and work on the exact schedule, we'll then put a, the budgets and the project accounting together. Part of that will be progress report, a very frequent progress reporting that we can give you whenever you ask for it, to make sure that we're progressing on the schedule. We're looking for about a 14 to 18 month total, the start to implementation schedule.
And if we get really unhappy with it in the middle of all this, what happens?
Then I'll work with Mr. Curly and we will, we don't want to do that.
I will say that representatives here from the Lucian today, I think they're here to see that that doesn't happen, but once again, we will, we're going to recommend to you all, if you give us authorization day, today, that when we do receive the contract, that Mr. Curly would review that and we would work on that until we have it finalized to everybody.
And I will say, Lucian has done this with Texas community colleges multiple times, so there isn't, we're not blazing new ground here, so hopefully we won't evict them of those type of mistakes.
Have they revealed to you their failure rate? No? They have no failure rate.
Do you have a failure rate? I will say, I've really never worked with a school that was unhappy with a Lucian.
That's what I was going to ask, have you contacted those two colleges?
Oh, absolutely. And another thing, when we were with the guided pathways group, this had a great deal to do, we talked with them about the guided pathways and the success, student success, and so many of the schools are with a Lucian. That was one other part of this that we felt good about it.
Will this system make it easier for department chairs and individual professors to look and see, in regards to the 60 by 30, to monitor how a student's doing as far as passing and failing?
Absolutely. I will say, and we, someone else could speak to this better than I can, I know, but all of the data, the information will see be so much more accessible to all of us without having to go to the institutional research office. No longer will we have to wait for reports to come in for us, we'll be able to, to call those up. But Greg, the, the, when they were here doing their demonstrations, it was amazing. Everyone was thrilled to death when we saw these.
My concern is, if we have a student that's not doing well, the quicker we can catch them, the quicker we can get them caught up.
Absolutely.
Or if they're having a problem in a certain course, we can find out why. And I told Dr. Farmer, our teachers, our instructors and our professors and our department chairs are going to have to put their title slash counselor if we're going to meet this 60 by 30 and what the guided pathways is talking about. And I don't have a problem with that.
I think we're all become better advisors.
The more you get to know that student, the better.
More access to information that we have, the more readily available the information is on our website, the more, all of those, I think it will enable us as administrators or faculty, anyone to be able to advise students along the way.
My concern is like, or my idea is that if we have someone who is a history major and they're not doing well in anatomy and physiology, then that chairman of the social studies department can look and see, and then after talking to the student, talk to the professor in anatomy and physiology and find out what the problem the student's having to keep them from failing and get them out of here.
Well, I'll tell you right now, what I've seen with this system and what I've seen with the guided pathways, this is going to prevent a lot of that in the future. We're not, we're going to get people into the right spots in the beginning, that's going to save time, save wasted time for those students and get them on the right path. And something like this system is just adamant that we have something like this in order to do, instead of, you know, one counselor over here. I mean, we, one of the things that we found out with the guided pathways is that not everybody was just advising the same. This, a system like this is going to allow us to do so.
Well, I think that's a great idea.
I'm not familiar with this very much, so I'm just, this is a fair question, I think. It's an innocent question, and that is, so a student's failing in a class, how much does this program in any form penetrate that class? That is to say, analyze the problem, or is that still up to the individual instructor?
I think possibly. Vice President Indy could answer that better for you, maybe then.
If you don't mind, ERP isn't the learning management system, Canvas is our learning management system, but what it does is allow us to integrate the Canvas learning management system with the ERP. So what we're looking at is the ERP telling us what the student is doing overall, and then being able to drill down to say, okay, here's where the student is experiencing success and failure, where are these occurring? When you get to the level of the course, Dr. Marlet, we're back into the realm of the faculty-student relationship in the course. The LMS won't tell us everything, but the information in the LMS integrates with this ERP automatically, so we can get that information in real time. And someone like Dr. Eby, the dean of academics, could talk to a social science chair about a student who's having trouble in a social science class, hey, we've got this warning, Mr. Finley's group would tell us that, what's going on with the faculty member? And the faculty member deals with the individual student based on student performance and student issues for non-success, but the faculty member can also then look at class performance, which the Canvas system can already let us do, but the information is trapped in Canvas, if you will. We want to be able to pull it across and look at, is this a problem in a specific class? Is it a problem across a group of courses? Is it a problem in a discipline? Is it a problem of a student learning outcome? And that's where this becomes very, very important, because instead of treating a specific instance individually, we're starting to look at patterns of performance and where we can head them off. This problem occurs here. All right, let's design an intervention in front of it. So I hope I've answered your question. It isn't invasive to the course, it doesn't dictate to the faculty member how to handle it. What it does is tell us how to talk with our faculty about challenges our students are facing and how we can better address them to enhance student success.
And the other program was called Canvas?
Canvas is our learning management system, and if you're interested in learning more about that, I'm sure we can provide you opportunities to learn about it.
Whatever is convenient.
We'd be glad to set up an appointment for you and anybody else who'd like to learn about it, and show you your way through the Canvas learning management system.
Thank you.
And that is a new system that we purchased last year.
Yes, yes.
And all faculty was trained across the board on that last year.
And all of our courses must have a Canvas component to them if they are credit hour generated courses. So if it generates credit hours for workforce or for transfer, it must have at least a backbone of Canvas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was my question. These two work together.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
Excellent.
Okay. Well, at this time, we would recommend to the board of trustees that we award the proposal to the vendor as presented, the Lucian, along with authorization to enter into a contract with the vendor subject to general counsel review and approval.
All right. Is there any more that you want to go over that slide?
Now, that's pretty well.
Just to give us that information?
Just on the line you have on what we, how we expect to proceed on this.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments by the board at this time? Dr. Marlet?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, so concerning the authorization to proceed, is there a motion to approve the recommendation as presented regarding the ERP as of today? And take that first step forward, which will allow us to go on to, look at a contract. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation as presented?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved unanimously? All right, that's approved. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank y'all.
And you have some people here, I see. Who are those people, eh?
I'm sorry.
That's okay?
We have with us Sharon Keith, and she is our senior strategic business advisor, and she lives in our area.
Oh, cool.
And then we have Eric Monroe, and he is the account executive with the Lucian that we're working with.
All right. Well, thank you for coming here today. Do y'all have any comments?
Absolutely. No, thank you very much. We're excited. We're very excited to get started with you. I think Greg hit on how many schools we have in the state, and it's just great to add another one, it's a bigger family.
I will say, when they came to do demonstrations, they had to come twice because they were here during the ice storm and had to leave, so they had to come back a month later. But the team that they brought with them were so impressive, they didn't, the two of these didn't do it alone, I'll tell you that. There's a lot of behind the scenes.
Well, thank you for coming today.
It was a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Cantrell, thank you. Greg, thank you. We'll move to item number seven, reports. A graduation report. Dr. Cantrell?
Within your board packet, the graduation report for 2017-18 can be found. The first table within the report breaks down degree completion by type of degree, certificates earned. The August 17 and December 17 columns are exact numbers, however, May 18 column is an estimated number, as this number is, as this is the number of petitions submitted by students. Registrar's office is currently reviewing petitions for all May graduates. This number will fluctuate as some students will not meet all requirements for graduation, and petitions will be accepted throughout the summer. In comparison to last year's graduation report, a total increase in awards earned occurred. 741 awards were earned over the 17, 16, 17 academic year. For the 17, 18 academic year, an expected 782 awards will be granted. This increase is largely attributed to the certificates and the development of protocols to ensure students petition for graduation when they are enrolled in a workforce program. The second portion of the report highlights a survey that is conducted each year at commencement. The survey questions students about full-time employment and future plans with regards to transfer. This year, the students who participated in commencement, Charleston State University was identified as the top transfer school with UTA and second. The other top three universities, Midwestern State University, University of North Texas, and Texas Women's University. This concludes the graduation report. I'll be happy to address any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. The next report would be proposed 2018-19 budget report. Dr. Cantrell?
I'd like to point out to you all, I'm not sure that all board members realize that there is a local policy out there that will, says that we will bring a preliminary budget to you all in May, and then a proposed balanced budget in June. In the, we didn't always do that, but we try to do that, even though there's changes that are made throughout the summer. We have that base budget that we bring to you all in June that gives you the basis for where we're moving to. And then later on, we're proposing, and I'll let Dr. Farmer talk with you all later about proposed dates for our budget workshop. Information discussion, I just went over in a little bit on what of the preliminary budget, since we were not able to have a board meeting in April. At that time, the budget wasn't balanced, we were about $156,000 off. But we talked about in there what we did do and what we, we put in a 3% salary increase for all full-time employees totaling $499,000. We added three new faculty positions, mathematics, phlebotomy, and behavioral sciences, two new assistant coaching positions, men's basketball and rodeo, and two new staff positions, student services, and human resources were added. There were more requests, but we felt like by getting this out there early, that we gave a better opportunity to those areas to advertise and possibly get a great quality candidates going early in time. So, and then auxiliary enterprises, expenditures increased $453,000, basically to the addition of a new security access system for our expenses and security camera system at the dorms. Student aid was increased by $277,000 due to Stafford loans and T-Pegs, and the Weatherford College, the Wise County, Wise County budget increased by $141,948 due primarily to the $69,400 increase for the lease of the WCWC facility. When we started working after that point in time and to balance that budget, we had a few changes, not a lot, there's about $85,000 worth. A decrease in the required transfer from reserve for Wise County, Wise County of $9,826 is some adjustments. The Parker County Adalorm tax revenue increased by $95,000 to reflect current and anticipated collections for 2017 only. At this point in time, there is only the adjusted balance for this year in there for Parker County taxes. There's only for Wise County, there's only the taxes reflected for this past year because they've been, and county auditor always asks me not to change that figure until they tell us, give us a figure for that, so I have not done that. Wise County preliminary taxable values have increased from $6,484 to $7,515, reflecting an increase of $31,000, so that sounds very positive for us. But no changes, I said at this point, no changes reflected in the Wise County branch maintenance tax. Changes in expenditures budgeted in the proposed budget as compared to the preliminary budget. A decrease in staff benefits, this is from the proposed, the preliminary to the proposed, we had put originally $75,000 for staff benefits in there, not having the insurance rates in, but the insurance rates came in flat, which we were very thrilled with that, so we reduced that by $50,000 and less $25,000, hopefully for any other adjustments that we would need. An increase in desktop computer leases totaling $3,0617, a decrease in salary and fringe benefits for Wise County, Wise County of $9,826, and a decrease in salary and fringe benefits for main campus of $14,794. And that's the change from preliminary to proposed, which there'll still be those to the final August. Items not reflected in the budget, but under further consideration following discussion and direction from the administration board of trustees. Additional Parker County and Adalorm tax revenue resulting from any increase greater than 1%, but less than 8% over the effective tax rate. The effective tax rate will be certified no later than July 25th. Additional personnel not currently approved but requested. Additional costs for the 2018-19 budget for the ERP system due to added, added value and timing of purchase. WCWC indirect cost rate adjustment, anything that we would have there, we're still working on, on that. Additional funds needed for the Grand Mary Education Center project, which is, that was, we're still working on, on that to see what we're going to do. And then major repair and renovation needs for Carter property. I'm also working with Dr. Farmer, we haven't had a lot of time yet, he's been a busy man, and I've been doing, I've been traveling too, so we're going to sit down and some of the priorities that he has, we'll be working with those in the next couple, three weeks or so, to get those added in here. And we will receive tax certifications no later than July 25th, and at that time, I would start working. And at that time, I would start working diligently to get those tax dollars in there properly. And we'll be adding back possibly anything that we can to this budget. Are there any other questions that you all would have on the proposed budget at this time? I would encourage you, if you review this, if you like something to read at night, if you want to call me. I'm usually up pretty late, so feel free to call anytime, though. I'd be glad to give you any detail, Dr. Marlet, or anybody else about Wise County that, or any other area that you'd like.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Good report.
Thank you.
As always. Security audit report, Chief Stone and Dr. Finley. I'll tell you what, that's one of the most comprehensive reports I've ever seen in my entire life.
Yes, sir.
You read and you read and you read and then you read some more.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to go over each page or just give us a...
No.
All right. All right, thank you. Proceed.
All right. The Texas Education Code, Chapter 37, Point 108, requires school districts, public junior colleges districts to conduct a safety and security audit of the district facilities at least once every three years. Within the board package, the safety and audit, safety and security audit guide provided by Texas School Safety Center can be found. This audit guide is to assist junior college districts by providing a mythology to identify current conditions and practices as well as to assist the development of action plans to address those areas in need of improvement. The audit guide provided assesses nine core areas, environmental design, campus police and security operations, emergency management, information technology, security, environmental health and safety facilities, business continuity policies, communications, and residential facilities. As part of the audit, a survey of college community regarding fillings of safety and security was conducted. The survey is also included within the report. And I will now turn it over to Chief Stone, who did much of the work on the audit, and he can discuss specific areas we are focusing to increase our preparedness.
It's already been a long day, hasn't it? Again, this audit is very extensive. Some of it falls beyond the realm of realistic for our size of college, and a lot of it does. What's good about this audit is it does allow us to look at where we're at and where we need to be. The survey was very positive in my view of it. I appreciate the fact that most people on this campus feel safe while they're here, and that's important to us. Some of the audit that we looked at and some of the things that we're working on is the camera system that Andrew mentioned putting down and the new locking system for the dorms. That's a really big deal for us going on to this fall. We hope that makes it because we're, those systems are worn out. You can imagine kids running in outdoors. Those locking systems are gone, and we definitely need that. And some of the other things that we're working on is, of course, getting word out for situational awareness training, some of those things that we do already. But we're going to try to expand that, make it more available to students, faculty and staff. And that's kind of our big focus for this fall. Do you have any questions about the survey or...
No, I don't. I just want to say that I, I think that as we go forward in, in the next few months and years, I think security is going to become even more, more and more important. It's already at the top based on some of the things that happened, but I'm glad that, I'm glad to see this report. I'm glad that it's a good baseline to, to assess all the different areas. I mean, that is an extreme, like I said, that's an extremely comprehensive report.
Yes, sir.
And we want to try to take care of this before some sort of a horrendous event happens. And I hope you're concerned about that, Chief.
Very pleased with the fact. Faculty staff administration here has always been proactive with us and trying to get in front of these things. And, you know, I couldn't work with a better administration ever as far as us being proactive and trying to stay ahead of the egg olive oil.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I agree. Security is, it's something that can be easily ignored, but it's something that has to be right at the top of our priority list if we're asking people to send their sons and daughters up here to go to school.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finley. Guided pathways, pathways update. Mr. Indy?
The guided pathways leadership team, under the director, direction of Dr. Cantrell, has continued to advance the college's activities regarding pathways. And we want to take a moment to thank Dr. Cantrell and also Dr. Alex Ebe, who has led in May two workshops on curricular redesign and pathways alignment. And Dr. Cantrell will give you an update on those specific events and what we're doing moving forward in your July board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I like good, short reports. You did a great job. Not to say we don't need good, long reports. Number eight is our next agenda category, future agenda items or meetings, and that would be Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would like to begin by thanking Dr. Cantrell and her team. They've done a great job in preparing the budget as we move into the budgeting season. I am very pleased to tell you that due to economic growth in the Weatherford College service area and housing construction, it is very likely that we are going to, again, be able to cut our current tax rate. So we look forward to our budget discussions moving into Agenda Item 8B there. Just wanted to give you a heads up that Teresa will be getting with you as she did last year regarding some possible budget dates for, for the budget workshops. Dr. Cantrell has some dates that she's proposed that fall in line with the legal guidance associated with that process. And so while we have some flexibility there and we want to work around any other commitments, we're certainly going to have to meet the legal requirements associated with getting that budget adopted in a timely manner, and Teresa will be getting you those dates shortly.
Thank you. All right. Are you ready to go to B, budget workshop?
The budget workshop does concern those dates that I just referenced, and so...
Anything else other than just...
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Agenda item number nine, announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Dr. Farmer mentioned earlier our students at the College National Finals Rodeo in Casper, Wyoming. They are competing today and tomorrow. And then, as we said earlier, as Dr. Farmer said, our two team ropers, we are expecting to see them in the finals, which is Saturday night. That's the prime time broadcast on one of ESPN's networks as well. At a later date, we'll let you know when that's going to happen. So we're really excited about their progress this year again. We do have our Independence Day holiday, of course, July the 4th. July 9th is our ex-students meeting. I always want to invite you to come and enjoy. I know that Leland Sue normally come, but we'd like to have all of y'all. You're always welcome to that. And then our summer two semester begins on July 11.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, we're down to number 10, closed session. Closed session will be under two categories. Number A, item A, deliberate real property in accordance with Government Code 551072. Item B, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee in accordance with Government Code 551074. So let's take about a five-minute break and then we'll, we'll pick up our closed session. So we are adjourned for now for five minutes back into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more announcement. We'd like to congratulate Dr. Trev Dixon's son for winning state in baseball. And now he's got a scholarship to go down to Solomon and Gomorrah University to play.
Way to go, Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Grisard.
All right. It is now 4:19 and we are going back into open session. Our other session, closed session, has been closed and we're now in an open session. And there are no action items involved in item number 10, and so there will be no motions or action taken on anything discussed in that, in that... All right, we're down to item 11, which is on the agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Ah, you make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.